Welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board of Education Work Session for August the 17th, 2022. Can we stand for a pledge?
Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You've had a chance to look at the agenda, have a motion to approve.
It's all moved.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. We've had a chance to look at our approval of minutes for August the 3rd closed session. Has everybody had a chance to review those?
Motion to accept the minutes for August 3rd, 2022 closed session.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Approve to the August 3rd open session. Everybody had a chance to look at those.
Motion to approve the minutes for August 3rd, 2022 open session.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. And last is closed sessions for August 11th.
Motion to approve the minutes for August 11th, 2022 closed session.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, and next on our agenda is summer programming. Mr. Kentop and Amy Smith.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Salins, members of the board and executive team. I am Kevin Kentop, the Arise Alternative Program Administrator.
Good evening, and I'm Amy Smith, supervisor for K-12 mathematics and gifted and talented. So this evening, we're going to talk a little bit about the instructional programming that occurred throughout the summer, the different students that had an opportunity to experience camps, enrichments, and summer school, and the overall evaluations of summer programming. And the first part, I get the pleasure of talking to you a little bit about the summer camps. This was the first year that we were able to offer summer camps for grade students 3 through 8. We had an art in nature camp, a STEM or STEAM camp, we had a drama camp, and we also had a team sports camp. There was 145 students across grades 3 through 8 that were involved in the different camps, and this year it was paid through the Gears Grant. And next summer, we'll have enough funding to be able to run the camps one more time. And so you can see up here a variety of pictures from our students that they were on their nature walk, pulling different pieces from nature themselves to inspire their sketch and their art projects. You see some dance and drama where they were learning their sketches up here. You see the development of their STEAM Rube Goldberg projects. In this one, you see a lot of the finished art projects. They had, one of the campsites did a walkthrough and had students that were actually in their enrichment program come and get to see the different art exhibits during a break time that they had in the course of the day. And you can see the final product of the group that had the play and put on. They did a phenomenal job with four weeks to put together a play, and you notice they were very creative to do backdrops and costumes among them. And when I had the opportunity to go through the evaluations, but also talking to students throughout the program, I was asking, are you enjoying this? Is this, has it been fun? Have you learned new things? And almost every one of the students asked, are we going to have this again next year? Because they really did enjoy this experience. I ran into parents on the final day for presentations, and several of them said their kids haven't stopped talking. When they come off the bus, they're like talking nonstop, telling about the projects and the different activities that they had the chance to participate in. Each of the students also received a little swag bag for being a member of the camp, and they gave them a water bottle, a backpack, a notepad for the different projects and activities that they would be doing. And I did also bring water bottles over here for the board members to be able to have one from our Explore and Engage camps.
Next, we're going to talk about the Summer Enrichment Program, which was the K-8 program, similar to what we ran last summer. We had six sites this year instead of five. We added Sudersville Middle one this year because we were able to do it staffing-wise. Our numbers, we had 122 students involved at Mata Peak. Mata Peak, remember, is a south county program, so it included Mata Peak Elementary, Kenalan Elementary, Bayside Elementary, and both of the middle schools on the island, which is why the numbers are larger there. The other larger 195 is Queen Anne's that encompass Centerville Elementary, Kennard Elementary, Centerville Middle School. Every other one was, it's an individual site, and we had a good attendance this year, a good number of students who were able to partake in the program. In our program, there are two pieces. It is focused on English language arts and math. The English language arts focused the first couple of weeks on literary text, themes, central ideas, figurative language, and so forth. The second two weeks, they worked on informational texts, once again, supporting details, central themes, and they enforced what they learned during the school year. So it is the skills that they were supposed to have gotten this year in their grade level reinforced over the summer. Teachers, once again, we provide them with the lessons, we provide them with the support tools, but they are able to take those pieces and teach however they want. And just one little example that I did bring tonight was when they were doing middle school central idea, she went ahead and made a teen newsletter in the class. The kids wrote all the stories about the Delaware Fair, about soccer, about Centerville Middle School next year. And so they created their articles for this, and then they switched articles, and they had to identify the pieces, the theme, the central idea, and supporting details. So it wasn't just a rotary, here's the text, let's go through and write some things down and identify stuff.
And then the second portion of each of the students' days was in mathematics. And again, in mathematics, we focused around core learning strands that were the grade level, but also really had a component of fluency and building some of those mathematical strategies within their class time. And so during the instruction, they had some small group instruction, they had some whole group instruction, but they also had opportunities to do center experiences, which gave them times to be able to play some of the mathematic games and use a lot of the math manipulatives to really help develop a little bit deeper fluency for some of the students' skills so that they're really ready for this fall as they come back. The extended school year works right in conjunction with the enrichment courses. So through this, we served 175 students in academic and speech services over the summer programming. It is really important to note that this really focuses around students' IEP learning goals and objectives, so the special educators are there to really push into the instructional setting, provide those extra small group supports, but also key strategies as they're working on those independent activities. It gave students a more inclusive type learning environment instead of a pull-out experience, allowing them really to interact with the students and gain a lot of those instructional strategies in both mathematics and their English language arts.
The third program that we had going on was our high school credit recovery program. We have a partnership, we have a contract with Edmentum. Edmentum allows us to use their platform to create our own custom courses, to be able to provide our high school students with academic courses for credit recovery, so they can get their credits up to speed. This summer, we had 191 parents who signed their children up to be part of the high school summer school recovery program. Of that, 180 of the students attempted recoveries. I say that because 191 parents signed kids up, 180 students participated. There were still some students that didn't, even though their parents signed them up for it, they didn't want to be a part of the program. Of those 180 students, we had 268 credits that were recovered. We had 99 students who recovered a single credit, and we had 81 students that recovered more than one credit. It's very important to note that the purpose of the summer program is really to keep the kids up to speed with their graduation cohort. So of our students, we had 41 students who, if they wouldn't have taken summer school courses, would have been what is traditionally known as retained, but in the high school setting, it means they still would have been considered a freshman instead of a sophomore, or still a sophomore instead of a junior. So you have to have six credits to be a sophomore, 12 to be a junior, 18 to be a senior. 41 of them, because of what they did this summer, were able to reach that number, and almost 70 of them were able to get off of that bottom number and give themselves a little bit of leeway as they move forward for graduation. So I would say we had a very successful program. This is the longest-running summer program that we have, and it's evolved over the years. And I would say 180 active students is one of the largest we've seen.
And then one thing, if I can add this right, 99 students received one credit, 81 received more than one. That equals 180.
No, more than one, that means they could have had two, some got three.
What I'm saying is the 99 students plus 81 student equals 180. So every student who's in this program at least received one credit for what I'm reading on this.
Right, minus the 11 whose parents signed them up and they did not.
But the ones that did come, 180 did. So every student participating in this program got at least one and possibly two.
Possibly more.
So everybody made progress that was in this program.
Yes.
The other summer program that we had, and this is also another longstanding summer program that's here, was our migrant program. The migrant program starts a week earlier than our other summer programs did and ended a week later, and they have the extended day because these students get really fully immersed in English language and some of the cultural experiences while really preparing them to get ready for this fall entry into the school level. They had many different organizations that helped support extra food, extra activities. They had a volunteer, they had plenty of volunteers to offer some family nights throughout the summer programming as well.
I have a question about the Christ Church. Did they reach out to y'all and offer that, or is that just a partnership they have with that school?
I believe it is a partnership that they've had over the years that is part, because we also service not only Queen Anne students in migrant program, but a couple of the neighboring counties also send migrant students into this program.
And Dr. Sprinkle and I were there, we actually talked with them that day about it, that Christ Church was involved in helping to support their program this summer. In conclusion about all of our summer programs, we had over 800 students involved in some sort of program over the summer. The great thing about, I feel, our summer offerings this year is that we hit every level of student that we have, from a student who may need special needs and need extra support, all the way to our gifted and talented students from pre-K to 12th grade. We had opportunities for kids to participate in a number of things, and I think that's hugely beneficial to look at in the big picture. We had over 160 adults directly servicing students, so that's your paraprofessionals, your teachers, you had site directors at each of the schools. We had nursing full-time at every school to handle anything that was going on there. So there were 160 folks in the building working with the kids, probably just as many folks behind the scenes, from here in the board setting up curriculum, to custodians moving furniture from an elementary school to the high school so that the little kids had the right stuff to sit in. It's just from SEDEXO helping out with all food. There was just, this is not a, and I was, just because we're sitting here, this isn't a Kevin and Amy thing. This started last January with a starter team, and then it went out, and there's hundreds of people that made this happen, bus drivers, bus aides, all that kind of stuff. So I'm grateful to everybody that was part of the program. The one thing that we have done is, since we have so many programs, we've been doing some debriefing already from this summer to look at how things might be able to go better next year. Every one of these four programs comes from a different funding source. So you have a Gears Grant, you have a migrant grant program, you have special ed with their ESY services, and then you have our Summer Enrichment, which has been run through our ESER funding program. So some of these, we know we're going to continue next year, some we know we're going to have to look at and find possible other funding sources for. So we've already started that. Actually, I would say, Mr. Pender, we had our first debrief the first week of summer school about transportation to make sure that next year we're ready to go. So we're already thinking next summer.
Was there a max capacity for the camps or the enrichment program? Did we reach that capacity?
For camps, we had initially in the grant set the maximum capacity to be about 18 students per camp itself. Most of my, most of the camps got close to 18. I had one that actually filled the 18, that was one of my STEAM camps. We had to run two sections of STEAM camp at Mata Peak Middle because, since we made some adjustments as far as locations. So I didn't hit maximum capacity in every one, and we ran into a little bit of attendance here and there because there were other camps that parents had paid for, and so there was a gap in one point that one week was a little bit thin, and then the next week we picked up again. So, but overall, we were close to the maximum capacity in the ones that we ran. But I have the opportunity again for next year to run them, and I'm hoping now because of the excitement that was really generated from parents and students, that we'll see maximum capacity with an option of maybe doing two of each of the themes in the sites.
As far as the Summer Enrichment Program goes, our classroom sizes are 12 to 15 students because we don't want it to get too large. That's how you get the benefit of a summer program. We did not hit capacity across the board. We ran into a lot more parents this year than we have in the past, that are just like, no, my kid is taking a break this year. Dr. Sprinkle and I have already started planning how we can maximize our capacity in seating next year, having more of a procedure that, besides our targeted students, how we can pull in more students to fill that. The, I mean, the ESY program, the extended school year, yes, they met their, they have to meet every student's need, so they maximize what they had. And as I said, 180 students in the high school program, there isn't a cap for us. If 300 students need to regain credits, we look for more teachers, and we open up more classrooms, and we do what we can with that. So that, there's really no capacity for the high school.
Is that a Gaga ball pit?
It is a Gaga ball pit. So each of the sites, I used part of the grant to get a Gaga ball pit for each of the sites that did not currently have one. And any of the camper groups, when they did some of their rotations and breaks, they joined in there. The team sports maximized the use of the Gaga pit, but that was an added bonus for the students. There was many of them that wrote, what was the best part? Loved Gaga pit time, you know?
I was gonna say, you might want to advertise that a little, emphasize that for next year. I don't know what it is about Gaga.
It has generated quite the buzz for adults and students.
I would say a lot of adults learned what a Gaga pit was this year.
The one other thing that I want to say as far as the camps, the piece about the camps, the nice thing is that it was different. Kids were learning, and they were interacting and growing socially, and they were really thinking and problem-solving and being creative and designing their own projects throughout. But it was different than being seated in a classroom and having talking time and, you know, direct instructional time, and then some independent practice. And so I think there was just a very different, overall, everyone said, it felt like a camp, that even though we were in school and we were in classes, it felt like a camp. And the teachers who worked them, you could see on them that it was, in a sense, a break that they needed after having a tough year in a sense, you know? They seemed to enjoy it almost as much as the kids did, working in this camp environments.
I do want to add one additional thank you, and I didn't put it on my slide, and that is a group of folks that don't always get recognized, and that's the administrators at the buildings where we had these. Even though I had site coordinators in the buildings, all of the administrations of the home buildings took it on to, if they needed help. Queen Anne's, we had every program possible running at Queen Anne's. And the administrative staff, under Mr. Schreckenhaus, they were willing to help every day, whatever was needed. Same thing at Mata Peak, we had multiple schools. And if their school wasn't a host, like Bayside or Kenalan Elementary School, they weren't hosting one, they took turns taking time over and spending a week at the programs so that they had additional administrative support. So I want to thank all the administrators that supported the programs, too.
Yeah, great job to everybody.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Now, most of the people, Queen Anne's County teachers that are running this and signing up for it?
This year, I believe we were at 100% that were Queen Anne's County.
Yes, everybody was staff, either teacher or support staff that was.
That were either employed last year or were newly employed coming up this year and work.
Probably even.
Right.
That sounds very successful. Okay, I appreciate what you guys have done, and thank all your staff and people that did it.
Thank you.
Okay, skeet shooting club update, Mr. Pender and Dr. Salins.
Well, just very informal, we know that this is something that's near and dear to the board, and so we felt like we would just make sure that we have a kind of a update, you know, out to the public and everything. So Sid's the one who's had the conversation, so I'll allow him to go ahead and.
So I would just like to say, the team they had this year consisted of 10 student athletes from Kenalan High School and Queen Anne's County High School. Coach Sean Connolly did a great job with those students, and I know some of you have been able to go out there and witness that. They were very successful, especially in the trap division where they finished the regular season in the state of Maryland third. They came in during the state tournament in second, and there's some really standout student athletes there with John Doolan, he placed second in the novice division. McCollin Connolly placed third place for junior varsity. Austin Watkins placed second place for junior varsity. And Caitlin Lee was first place for the female division. And she also finished the season in second place. This is something that gives us students an opportunity who may not be on the traditional, you know, soccer, you know, football opportunity path, something like this, you know, keeps them engaged in the school. So this past year was a trial period, and it very well. So next year, we're opening it up. Each team, Queen Anne's County High School will have their own team, Kenalan High School will have their own team. 20, we're going to cap it right now, 20 students at each school because, remember, it's 10 students per coach. And I've had conversations with, you know, Mr. Connolly about that, and not going way too, you know, big too soon, take small steps at a time, and he's been really good about it. And so that's the course that we're going to go. And I'd like to also say, Mr. Connolly put a lot of time and effort into this as far as, you know, writing for grants to get funded, fundraising. Not one student had to contribute any kind of funds to this. They were able to support their own. So by moving forward now with the new MOU of, you know, each team, a team at each school, it's going to give them the opportunity to fundraise and also apply for some different grants. You know, step in the right direction, and he's very happy. And I know the coach that will be at Queen Anne's County High School, he's a great person, law enforcement background.
Mark Madison.
Yes.
Mark Madison.
So whenever we have a threat at one of our schools, I always get teamed up with him to walk the school with his dog, and he's a good, very, very nice man. So we're excited about that, you know? I've been able to talk to, I know, you know, John Doolan, a nice young man, and, you know, gives them a sense of pride for their school and a sense of pride for the school system, you know, being on this team. So kudos to them, and like I said, we look forward to next year, you know, each school having their own team. Any questions or?
Do we know if any of the students that were seniors, did anybody try to get a scholarship? Because I know that one of the gentlemen that works at Sudersville Skeet, I think he might be a recruiter for another, for a college, is he not?
Yes, he is. I'm not sure, and it's interesting, because I had that question when I was talking to Mr. Connolly in my head, and then when we finished talking, I was like, all right, I forgot that. Because I think that is important. I mean, you know, we have had, we have had some students, you know, like mountain biking, you know, go to seek scholarships and that. So there is money there to help support, you know, the student going to college, but I can follow up on that because, you know, I had that in my mind, and we got done talking, and I'm like, all right, that was the one thing I meant to ask him.
Yeah, I was just really impressed. Sean's just done so much, so kudos to him as well. I mean, he's worked really hard for many years to get this going, and, you know, and we're keeping the sport alive and the fact that there's still no injuries in skeet anywhere ever in their 19 years, and he kept that going, so that's a good thing.
He did a very nice job.
Thank you. So we'll have team at each place, so we're basically doubling the team in size.
Actually quadrupling.
Oh, no, but at each, doubling the size of the team and have two teams, so you're going to be.
Two coaches at each school with 10 under each coach.
In our system, rather.
At 10 students this year between the two high schools combined.
Now you have 20 at each.
And now we have 20, so.
I was so impressed with the students, I mean, they were just so respectful and so appreciative of this opportunity to pursue something that they so obviously enjoyed. And it was very low-key, but very, I felt very safe. I mean, they followed really good.
And I'll say this, there was a lot of family involvement, you know, from keeping scores to, you know, assisting with it. It was really a group effort by all the parents also, which was nice to see.
Thank you, Sid.
Thank you. Thanks, Sean, for telling the board. We appreciate what he's done and how, the pressure that he's done doing it.
Extremely organized gentleman. He is.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to current action items. We've had a chance to look at the human resource report. Do you have a motion?
Yeah. Motion to accept the human resources and substitute bus driver report, August 17, 2022.
Second.
A motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Our next one is 5-02, policy 241 meal charges and unpaid meal balances. Julie Hickey.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Salins, board members and executive team. For the record, I'm Julie Hickey, coordinator of food services. I bring before you tonight the third reading of policy 241 on meal charges and unpaid meal balances. There have been no edits made to this policy since the first and second read of it. And again, this is a policy required by USDA for any school food service authority that operates the national school lunch program or the school breakfast program. I'm happy to take any questions anybody may have before the consideration of approval of this policy.
One question I have, and we've discussed this for six months to a year, because it used to be everybody had a free lunch. Now some are going down where some people aren't going to have free lunches, it used to. The process of getting, to apply for a free lunch, if you go to school and all of a sudden somebody didn't do their homework and their parents did not, what would, how long would the process, and what would the process be to get them into this program?
The process to submit an application is actually very quick. It takes, the application itself takes only about five or 10 minutes. It can be submitted either online, which is the quickest way to do it, or they can also submit a paper application. Once that application is submitted and processed, we know within an hour whether or not a student is eligible for a free or reduced meal. It's very quick.
So 24, 48 hours, somebody, it's not a week or two-week process or anything? So somebody could get approved all but immediately for a free or reduced lunch, it's under the federal guidelines?
Yes, like if we identify a student who hits that maximum, you know, charge on their account, say on a Monday afternoon, we call that parent, suggest that they maybe submit an application, we would know by the next morning that that student could receive free meals by the following day.
And this, from another member came, if they go over their $10 limit.
Yes.
In rears, then they would still be offered a meal?
Correct.
But it would be either a cheese sandwich or a peanut butter and jelly sandwich. Is that offered to everybody, too?
It is.
So it's not like somebody's getting something different, they just get a, if that's just the meal that would be, if somebody's in the rears past $10, they need to apply to the federal or to our system for free and reduced lunches, but they would not be put out separately or?
They would not, nobody would ever know the difference because, first of all, that child would not only just receive a sandwich, they also receive all the other meal components. They'd be allowed to select a fruit or a vegetable and a milk, so the meal that they're receiving on their tray looks exactly like any other student. And we do have peanut butter and jelly available to, in every school, every day, to any student. I mean, we have elementary students who choose to.
Oh, I got a granddaughter.
Eat a peanut butter and jelly every day. So there is nothing that would look different about that meal to anyone walking by a student's table. There's no way to identify that they've received that meal because they don't have money.
And so I'm there, I didn't do my homework, my daughter, son is in this class, you send me an email, we can email it, we can hard copy it, so a matter of a day, it could get approved.
Yep.
And then moved on.
Yep, and we're working closely right now with principals, guidance counselors, getting that information out, since it has been two years since a lot of these families have had to submit an application. So we are working closely, I can run reports, we see who is qualified for free or reduced meals in the past, we know when they're getting close to, you know, expiration of that, and we can call those families and, again, encourage them. We can't make them fill it out, but we can encourage them. So we can monitor all of who's coming close to expiring on a previous application, and like we said, work with them.
I know, I mean, COVID's been a lot of things, but it's.
Right.
It's a different thing. And once you start giving something to somebody, it changes, but the federal rules, the federal rules, if you apply and are qualified for free or reduced, you're talking to me, you're telling me within a day that it's going to be approved. If you're not, then you keep going the other way, then there's avenues to correct that, too.
Absolutely, and like we said, all we can do is, you know, we stress to people, we're not taking away free meals. I mean, sometimes you hear, oh, the free meals are gone. They're not gone. If you're eligible for them, you just have to submit the application.
And if they're not sure, and when in doubt, submit an application.
Absolutely.
Right, just put it in. I mean, the worst is going to happen, they're going to, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Although, thanks to Julie answering my questions, even if you don't qualify, if you go $10 in arrears, you get the meal, and they don't end up paying. You don't have to pay. Doesn't matter whether you.
Correct.
You approve it, I mean, whether you're, and so, but if they get into the program, we're reimbursed by the federal government, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
But if they're not, this is saying that there's no fiscal impact, but isn't there fiscal impact because we're paying for all of these meals at the end of the year? If they're not on the program, we've got, SEDEXO needs paid, do they not? Or somebody needs paid for these meals?
Or somebody needs paid for these meals?
The, the cost of the meal is just in Sedexo's product cost to us.
Okay.
But we, we can't claim, what happens is we cannot claim any of those meals. So if we are providing a student an alternative meal, we, we cannot claim those meals to them.
Reimbursement.
Right. So I understand what I'm saying, but we're paying them, then as in the Board of Education, there is a fiscal impact for us because we, someone, I mean, if I, let's say I go ten dollars in arrears my first week.
Yeah.
And I don't pay the rest of the year.
Right. Yes, there, there would be the product cost.
Right.
And while I can understand that scenario that you've offered, also we would have an intervention there. So if I see that a student has ten dollars in their account and that they're coming in every day and still seeking out that free meal, I'm going to be contacting their guardian to say, likely you may qualify, so let me help you. Cause maybe they weren't able to fill out the form, just needed some assistance, maybe language could be an issue, lots of different reasons why. You know, maybe it's a new enrollee and they didn't know. So, I mean, but if we see a pattern of behavior, we're definitely going to be intervening in that situation to try to, to guide them because likely they would.
Qualify.
Actually qualify for that. I mean, you know.
And we're sending it home in, in other languages as well.
In Spanish as well. And I, I have to say thank you, our Spanish interpreters have done an amazing job. They have worked and they have called each of.
Yes.
Our Spanish speaking families and walked them through that application. So they are actually our highest number of returned applications right now. So all of our communications go out in English and Spanish, but then we actually have, like we said, people who have contacted our Spanish population.
Yeah, and I've noticed that we're taking every opportunity to be able to get, like, we had the migrant program the other evening, like a culminating program, and we had several people there sitting down with and assisting to get those applications done while we had them on our school ground. And as we move through our back to school nights, I know Julie has already reached out to all the principals to ensure that we have people there to help walk parents through the process. I mean, it can be intimidating for someone.
Absolutely.
Any application in and of itself, I think, can be intimidating to anyone. So having someone there that can answer questions and walk through, it really is a five minute, you know, can be five minutes.
It's all it takes.
But sometimes people just need a little bit of assistance, so providing that assistance can help.
And the application, you can actually select, there's probably twenty different languages on the applic, the online application itself, you can change the language to any language that any of our families may need. So, but yes, we will be at the back to school nights with iPads, laptops open, encouraging, you know, parents to just fill it out right then and there.
And they can fill it out, anybody can fill it out, you just have to qualify or not.
Correct.
So did you want to just list a couple of the benefits of if they, they fill it out, what it does for the district as a whole? Not only does it provide a meal for their child at a free or reduced price, but it also helps benefit the district as a whole.
It absolutely does. So for students who would fill out that application, qualify for the free meals, if they qualify or eligible for the free and reduced meals, it also would offer them some discounts if they take the ACT, SAT, give some discounts on college applications. And it also provides additional funding for technology and educational purposes for the district.
That's what our, that's what our federal, a lot of our federal filings based on is free and reduced lunches.
Formulas, yeah.
Yep. So what we're stressing to people is that it is a lot more than just a meal application. There are other benefits for those families that qualify.
Thank you.
Well, have this at our open house or at things. A parent, it's September, October, who would be their contact at the school? Should they call the guidance counselor, the principal, teacher? Who, who's the best contact at a school?
I'm sorry, if they have a question as far as getting the application, I would go either to the front office.
Office, okay.
Yep, because they would be able to direct them.
So just go to the front office, to the secretary there or whatever, and then they have, they can be pulled through that thing.
Yeah, and they would have the paper applications if that's how they prefer to do it, right there in the front office.
And at every school, they'd have that.
They will have them by the end of, or the beginning of next week. It will be printed tomorrow.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Do we have a motion to?
Motion to approve the policy number two forty-one meal charges unpaid meal balances.
Second.
A motion second, all those affairs say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're still here.
Yes.
Don't go anywhere.
Me, yes. The second item I bring before you tonight for consideration is the approval of a ten cent per meal price increase for the upcoming two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I provided the historical meal price data for you back to two thousand and fifteen, and you can see that typically there has been a meal price increase every two years. Again, due to COVID, we did not increase our prices since two thousand and eighteen. Historically, again, we would have done that increase in two thousand and twenty. At that time, all of the meals were free to students. So we have, using the required USDA paid lunch equity tool, it was determined that we should increase our prices by fifty-nine cents for this upcoming school year, but we have opted to select the cap at ten cent increase and carry over the remaining forty-nine cent into the following school year. So if we were to opt or approve that ten cent increase in meals, that would bring the breakfast price from a dollar fifty to a dollar sixty for all students from the elementary to the middle to the high school level. It would bring the elementary lunch price from two fifty to two sixty and the middle and high school lunch price from two seventy-five to two eighty-five.
And was this up for public comment? Can we do that or?
It's a third read, right?
This is actually just a meal price update, doesn't go out for come, comment or anything.
Like we said, we use that required USDA paid lunch equity tool as our guidance as far as what we can increase that.
What we can, but the federal government for free and reduce reimburses at a different rate?
Correct, the reimbursement, whether they're, yes, the reimbursement rate is different, whether it's a free reduced or a paid meal.
This is just some student buying lunch on their own.
Correct.
At our system.
Yes, this would be the price for any student who.
I qualify.
Doesn't qualify for a free or reduced meal.
And this is not going to adversely hurt our budget, you don't feel or?
Well, this is going to increase our budget.
Yes.
To better meet income in alignment where we should be. I mean, they're telling, they're telling us we should be actually increasing it by fifty-nine cents and we're saying, well, that's a lot to our families, so we're going to take a step back and just do ten, ten cents, and then we'll revisit it next year.
Correct.
When it's at the forty-nine cents, which probably will be higher next year once the calculation comes back out.
Comes back.
Probably still going to be at fifty-nine cents or whatnot, yes.
I mean, that's, that's, that's my question. If, if somebody recommends fifty-nine.
And we're only doing ten. Yeah.
But we also.
Happy Jane? Towers, I'm sorry.
Right, one, one thing that's coming into effect in twenty-three alone is what we're hearing is a temporary reimburse, additional reimbursement of forty-five cents. So that forty-five cents plus the ten puts us to where we need to be for this year.
Okay.
Through the end of June of two thousand twenty-three, there is an additional reimbursement for forty cents for each lunch meal and ten cents for breakfast. So again, putting us right within, much closer to that fifty-nine cents.
So it almost looks like this is, we're in our third year, we're going up ten cents.
Yep, first time since two thousand and eighteen.
Eighteen, fourth year, right. So, yeah, I'm trying, yeah. That seems, I mean, very reasonable to the public. Do you have any other questions?
I have a motion to approve. Motion to approve the school year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three meal price increase.
Second.
I have a motion second, all those affairs say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hickey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Pullen.
Good evening, President Smith, members of the board, Dr. Salins and executive team. My name is Carla Pullen. I'm the facilities planner, Queen Anne's County Public Schools. So I am here this evening to talk to you about and request your approval for a reallocation of some state and local funding that is already allotted for several of our capital improvement projects. So if you will recall, back at the end of June, I was here and I let you know that we had bid three different projects for roofing and they all came in very far over budget. That was the Bayside Elementary School roof, the Kent Island Elementary School roof and the Kent Island High School roof. We asked for your approval to take those funds so they didn't go into the reserve at the state level for anybody to use. We asked you to allow us to request that they be put into a fund for Queen Anne's County Public Schools. So the funding from the state for those three projects is now sitting in a fund for Queen Anne's County to use. So the first order of business tonight is to request your approval to ask the state to move some of that money back into the project accounts for us in an effort to get some of these projects under construction and under contract. And to clarify, we have not approved contracts for these yet. The first order of business is just to get the money aligned where it needs to be, and that's why we ask your approval tonight. So the first part, part of this under, from the state, reallocate Queen Anne's County Public Schools funds from the state reserve account. The first number that you see is Bayside Elementary School. We would ask the state to allot five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. That is their fifty-one percent split. So we split that cost fifty-one percent, the county comes up with forty-nine percent. So that is fifty-one percent of the bid cost. The second portion is Kent Island Elementary School, five hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars. That is the fifty-one percent of the bid that we received. The state part is fairly easy. We had a reserve account, we are just pulling out the funds that we need. And to give you a little bit of background, where the additional funds are coming from is our Kent Island High School roofing project. As you recall, we had four million dollars for that. It came in at almost nine. We are going to come back to you in a couple of months and ask for capital funding for that again next year at the correct amount. So you will be seeing that project in our CIPI request coming again. We're not abandoning that project, we're just going to try to use some of the funds to take care of the projects that have lapsed, and then we'll go back for funding for Kent Island High School. The second part of this from the commissioners, this is where it gets just a little bit trickier. So in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, they gave us capital funds for Bayside Elementary School and Kent Island Elementary School to replace the roof. It wasn't enough to make that forty-nine percent based on the bids that we got. So we're asking this two hundred and eighty thousand is the amount of funding we currently have plus another two hundred and eighty thousand to be added to that pot to make our forty-nine percent. Kent Island Elementary School, we have available funding, we're asking to add another two hundred and twelve thousand to that pot to give us the available funding. And that gives us the full totals for the bids. Can I answer questions? I know this is very convoluted and difficult and there are many pots of money that are coming together. Again, we're not asking to do the projects right, right now, we're just asking for your permission to go to the state to have that money put back into our accounts and go to the county to ask for some of that money to be realotted.
What kind of timeframe are we talking? Because my concern is since these projects just keep going up, I mean, it seems exponentially. What kind of turnaround are we looking at to get these bids and to get an approval so that we, so that they don't.
Yes.
Go up? And are we going to get a fix firm for a certain amount of time?
Yes.
So we don't have to anticipate an additional?
Yes, great question. So we currently have open bids that are available for use. We are going to try, if we get the approvals tonight, to come back to you in September to get an approval for the contract. There is a hope that with some moderate weather, we would be able to do some of that project in the fall. But if that's not possible, then we can go ahead and get our materials purchased and stored until spring or maybe early summer of next year so that we're not seeing another price increase.
We, Kent Island High School was four million dollars. I'm assuming the state was close to two million dollars or a little, you know.
Yes.
How long, this adds up to a little bit over a million from the state's there.
Yes.
How long does that stay in our account? Is there any expiration date on that for the state or now it's in our account that we can just?
It's in our reserves until we ask the state to use that money.
We'll put back in general funds. We have time.
We have time to do that, but we certainly hope within the next year or two.
Well, we got projects we have to do, I understand, but, but it's not a, we're not underneath the gun.
No.
As far as six months or something from there.
No, at this point, we are not.
But what I really see the big thing on here is we're going to the county and asking them for almost five hundred thousand dollars of additional capital funds.
To come out of the Kent Island High School funding that was a loss from the county.
So we just.
We were already allotted, we just want to move it from Kent Island High School to Bayside and Kent Island Elementary.
So we're just asking that five hundred to come out of Kent Island, the same that they've already offered that.
That's correct.
And just move the rest of it back farther out.
That's correct. Yes.
And can you just share, like, for Kent Island High School, obviously the project goes well over, you know, we couldn't do it because of that, but it's also a full replacement, is that correct?
That's correct.
Which is something that you cannot necessarily do while occupied.
Right.
And so we couldn't even do that in the middle of the year if we were to get additional funding. But these two projects we can do while occupied, and can you talk about why we can do them while occupied?
Yes, that's correct. So specifically Bayside Elementary School, this is the metal portion of the roof that we would be replacing and is mostly over our public areas. So it's not over our learning spaces, it's over the cafeterias, over the gymnasium, it's over spaces that we would be able to have some flexibility to work without really interrupting the educational process. So that's part of the reason that we feel that we may have some flexibility in doing some of this through the fall. The Kent Island Elementary School is a little bit more complicated because it is their flat roof section, some of those are over top of classroom areas, but the thought is that we would be able to potentially do the, maybe even over the Christmas break if the temperatures remain moderate. We've been lucky in the past several years that we don't have as many cold spells as we did where the temperatures drop below forty degrees, so the contractors are able to work more consistently. With our Kent Island High School roof, the hope is that we would be able to do some of the classroom sections during a summer break because that is where we would have the most impact. And then if we had to work around a summer schedule, we could do some of the flat roof sections there during a time where students were in the building as well, they are over our more public areas. So we're trying to be as flexible as we can to assist the contractors, to get them in when it works with our schedule as well as with their schedule because that will help us to keep prices down too.
And then just to clarify, so you said the commissioners had allotted us for, just over four million dollars for the Kent Island High School project, which obviously came in way over budget. So what we're asking them to do right now is to, instead of using that money for Kent Island High School, which we've pushed a year, to use that money to where, for these other two projects. So they've already allotted us the money, we're just going to use it towards two other projects and then have to go back again, ask them for additional funding to do Kent Island High School.
That's correct. That's correct. So we have 2.4 million from the county for Kent Island High School. We're going to take some of that to complete the projects that we haven't, and then anything that's still remaining, we would ask them with our next capital request to just move that money into the Kent Island High School project as well.
Mr. Pender, security, when we're working on roofs and construction guys while schools are going on, especially the high school, what concerns do you have about that?
The high school will be done mainly in the summertime, so that really wouldn't be an issue. All of the employees, if we were able to go forward with what Ms. Pullen was saying, they all have to be background checked. They have to be, you know, go through the proper procedures before they're even allowed on the school site. This wouldn't be where they would be interacting with the children, you know, it's, you're confined to the roof. It's not, you know, passing through. It is something that's done and quite a bit in the larger school systems, just to keep up with it. Yeah, as long as everything is, you know, everybody's following the same procedures, I don't see a problem with it.
But is there a vetting issue as far as employees? They just are, they're not, is getting anybody to work on these projects there already established because they're working in a school environment?
That's correct. The state requires that.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Entertainer motion. Motion to approve the capital funding reallocation request, to reallocate state and local capital funding.
Motion of a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, girl. Mr. Pender.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Salins, board members, executive team. For the record, my name is Sid Pender, Chief Operating Officer. Tonight, I am seeking approval to, or a contract with Delaware Elevator to modernize and repair the hydraulic passenger elevator at Queen Anne's County High School. Delaware Elevator, we have a contract with, they do all of our inspections. They do our monthly walkthrough inspections. During the last state inspection, the cylinder, the hydraulic cylinder failed, and that elevator was installed in 1966. So with that being said, the cost of the replacement of the cylinder is $54,597. All of the controls that are there need to be upgraded, and this is an emergency procurement. With that being said, if we wait any longer, October, the regulations in Maryland change. It's going to add another $30,000 to $40,000 to this bill. But if we do what we need to do now, we're grandfathered into the regulations. So the tough part is, and I've talked to Mr. Schreckengast and also our staff, we're looking at an eight-to-10 week turnaround. And when I say that, I'm talking about getting the parts and the equipment in for it. So this is very crucial that we move forward with it. Currently, we do not have any students that require the elevator, but you never know with athletics, injuries, somebody breaking a leg, really, you know, it's going to be a toll. We're going to have to change classes and move things around. But again, you know, Delaware Elevator has been the company that we've worked with and has done all of our inspections and knows exactly what's going on with it. Any questions or comments?
So this, it's going to be a whole new elevator system, pretty much?
It's going to be, the elevator
In the same.
will remain the same. We will upgrade all of the controls and the hydraulics. And I went back and looked at the inspections for the past couple of years, and, you know, they've been kind of just piecing it along. You know, the recommendation was a full replacement. Obviously, you know, that's, you know, that's going to take a long time and a lot of money. So this is the best route for us to go. Again, like I said, it's about the eight-to-10 week turnaround, which, you know, doesn't bother me, but that's the best we can do with what we got.
So right now, the high school has no ability to get to the second academic wing?
As long, you have to use the stairs. So right now, when we're taking laptops up top, when we're moving furniture, it is all done by the stairwell.
I, I'm not implying anything about Delaware Elevator by saying this, but does it not seem a little unusual that the company that does inspections are also the ones doing the repair? I mean, it.
So that's a good, that's a great question. And actually, a year or two ago, the state of Maryland required a third party. So there's also a third party that comes and verifies everything that goes on. So Delaware Elevator does it, and then two years ago, I believe it was, there's a third party that comes to validate everything that they're doing and they're looking at. But like I said, it's, if you go back and look at the records, it's, we've been lucky the past couple of years.
Oh, no, I'm not doubting that we need a new one. I just, and I feel bad saying it, just that.
No, I know what you're saying.
It's a little, you know, different to have them inspect and to repair.
And we have elevators in other schools. We've had them, you know, county. I mean, this is, I mean, I know it's an emergency thing, but in your opinion, as professional opinion, as far as doing this in the past, it's reasonable as far as?
It is. I, like I said, that's a 1966 elevator. When they renovated that building, nothing was done to the elevator.
They didn't renovate that elevator?
No.
Did you know we have an elevator company in the industrial park?
All right.
Who knew there were that many? But, yeah, we do.
Any other questions or?
No, thanks.
Another motion. And coming out of unrestricted operating maintenance budget, that's.
Yes.
So.
That is correct.
That's not going to be a, I mean, it's a, it's an item, but it's not a major burden?
No.
Motion being said.
We'll have to see how it goes this year.
Yeah, it's definitely.
The building averages are over 50 years old. I mean, you might have something else come up.
Yeah, we're very, you know, have a little concern about it. We're going to.
So if you look at the average age, we were looking at deferred maintenance today. I know I'm kind of getting off topic, but if you're looking at deferred maintenance, the average age of our buildings is about 50 years old. I mean, even though we have some that are fairly, you know, 25 years old, the average age is about 50.
You know, 50 is a new 40.
Not for buildings.
If you don't bother me.
The other thing to remember is that you get grandfathered in, but when you start making changes to the building, the regulations, that's up there.
And this is all ADA approved and everything that meets the standards that have to be done?
No, I mean, in all fairness, though, that everything in a building in a school system takes just wear and tear that you just normally don't get on anything else. And so they are built for 40 to 50 years is what used to be the standard, but now they need to really be built for 60, 70, 80 years worth of use, to be honest with you. It's.
Like I said, in October, the regulations are changing, so that would add another $30,000 to what we're looking at right now.
Right, yeah.
I accept the motion.
All right, motion to approve the contract with Delaware Elevator to modernize, repair hydraulic passenger elevator at Queen Anne's County High School. Fiscal impact amount, $149,966. Budget source fiscal year '23 unrestricted operating maintenance budget.
Second.
A motion, second also, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. You're still here.
Yep. One more. Tonight, I'm seeking approval, contract with Bauer Mechanical to replace water heater at Mattapee Elementary School. The heat exchanger on existing water heaters failed due to the age of equipment parts, no longer available. Looking under the emergency procurement section to have this approved. It's a total of $33,900. We did ask another company to help. They did not provide any kind of documentation for us. The health department has cited us for that, for the hot water, as you can imagine. Maintenance was able to limp us along for a little bit and put in two temporary units, but just the volume of water that goes through there a day, it can't hold up. So I'm seeking approval of that from the FY '22 unrestricted operating maintenance budget. Any questions?
Well, I guess with Jane races or Mrs. Towers, her articles, this is 34. We had the other one. I know you never know, are we getting in better shape or no surprises lately? I mean, it's the beginning of the year. Seems like we're getting awful lot. It just happens?
It just happens. I mean.
I know, I mean, it's not.
We service them every year and we, preventive maintenance and, you know, boilers, chillers and all that. It's just like your air conditioner at your home or your hot water heater. You just never know. Um, that's over 20-some years.
20-some years.
At Mattapee. And you got to think, it's not like your residential house where it's just you and your wife or your kids. I mean, this is.
Constant.
Constant. And without, especially the cafeteria staff having adequate, they would have to boil the water every day, you know, to make that work.
Not just washing their hands and just sanitary things, it's just.
It's, and it is. I mean, when they, and what some people don't realize is, you know, when these items pop up, they're big-ticket items. They're not, you know, something that's just minor.
Yeah, I was coughing, choking a little bit when Sid sat down on Monday morning with a couple, or last Monday morning with a couple of items that were $100 and some thousand dollars. I was like, ooh. Costs of doing business, as they say, honestly.
It is.
Any other questions? We have a motion to replace the hot water heater at Mattapee Elementary School for a tune of $33,900.
So moved.
Have a second? Motion, second also, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of our agenda. Does anybody else have anything for this evening? Our next meeting will be September the 17th, our regular school board meeting, and by then, school will be in session. So welcome back, everybody. Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those say aye, aye. Ayes have it. Thank you.